It's seven o'clock, we will call the meeting to order. If everyone would rise to say the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey, Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. March.
Here.
Mr. Hamm.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Here.
Mr. Heck.
Here.
The approval or corrections to the minutes of the February 22nd, 2016 regular village board meeting, are there any additions or corrections? If not, a motion to accept is written.
So moved.
Second. Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Jones.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Hamm.
Accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending 2/27/16, in the amount of $46,688.37. Accounts payable, general fund, $33,061.82. Water and sewer fund, $31,725.02. Giving a total for all funds of $64,786.84. Are there any questions or discussion on any of the bills? If not, a motion to pay the bills and the payroll. Motion. Motion by trustee Heck, seconded by trustee Hamm.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mr. Hamm.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Public comment and/or questions on any non-agenda item? Oh, you're fine. If you have something you want to say, if you could just step up and give your name for the record.
Oh, sure, it's Julie Bucic from Studio On Second. I'm here with my coworkers, also Melissa Hart and Jenny Bedren. I know we have talked in the past, and I was grateful, I had talked to Mr. March this week at the beginning of the week, not knowing how the week would unfold, honestly, that with the possible break-in was very upsetting, and still is, you know. And I know it is also for the girls, but we feel now the burden falls on the village. We are done. We are done with the people on the street.
And I'm going to address that as we get further into the meeting tonight.
But we feel the burden falls on the village and the police department, and is no longer our responsibility. I just feel this could still be made a go of, and right now yoga is there, it's packed, I don't even know if she has enough room right now, and we did post no smoking signs at our entrance today, and the entrance to my upstairs apartment.
And let me, I'll just address what I was going to talk about a little bit later, because it's not on the agenda, but it was just something that I was going to bring out, and maybe it'll answer, you know, your question that you're asking, because I came down to your place of business.
Yes.
On Friday afternoon, and, you know, I saw, you know, part of the problem, you know, we have people coming out of other establishments, and they're standing in front of your building, in front of your door, smoking, so forth. There is a state law on the books, no smoking within 15 feet of any public door. So what I've asked the chief to do, and what I was going to inform the board of tonight, I've asked the chief, we're going to create a sign from the Peatone Police Department that's going to be distributed to every business in town, not just downtown, every business in town, asking the businesses to post those signs in their windows, and once those signs are posted, you know, then we will begin a strict enforcement policy. And there is, there is a penalty if you break that sign. There is a ticket. Chief?
That's correct, sir.
So.
How many tickets have been written in the last year on either the doors being open or the smoking ordinance?
As far as the smoking ordinance goes, smoking outside, none.
Okay.
You know, it's really been kind of, it's one of those, it's one of those laws that are on the book that not many places are really actually enforcing.
Sure.
So my point is, alright, it's time, in Peatone, we are going to make a standardized sign that everybody will have, that everybody will be asked to place, you know, in their place of business, and we move forward from there. The doors, you know, that's, that's an issue that we deal with with all of the liquor establishments. We ask all of the liquor establishments to keep their doors closed, that is part of the liquor ordinance, it's not, you know, just a made-up request, it's part of the actual liquor ordinance, and from this point forward, you know, if that ordinance is broken, then there will be, you know, a possible penalty along with that, too. Of course, you can't smoke, you know, inside establishments and.
Because I can't tell you, I think, I think a couple of weeks ago, I got a letter from the village, because my tenants two blocks down left their garbage cans out at night. So I know the village is not afraid to send out notices, you know, I have a weed in excess of six inches behind my dumpster uptown. I get those all the time, I get those every year, at least twice a year. Nobody seems to be afraid to send me an or, that I'm in violation of an ordinance, I expect the same. And maybe the first time I was here, I was maybe a little more quiet about it, but I do, I guess I'm here today that I do expect some action on this.
And that is, that is the next course of action.
Okay, I do appreciate your help, I, because I know Melissa had shot there this weekend, her Easter mini-session, she had 20 customers booked all weekend, from Naperville, from Schaumburg, from, we had Munster, Indiana, and we have people coming from everywhere. Saturday, she had an extremely hard time, extremely hard time. And I know if you go to downtown Frankfurt, if you go to downtown Tinley, to the bars, you don't see this, you know, with the kids and the families, I still think we should be able to coexist, and we just came from throwbacks now, we eat there all the time. They are, they are our biggest allies, we are in good communication with them, and I just feel with Susie's next door, I don't know if that's an issue that'll ever be solved with the way they conduct business, or the way they continue to conduct business, and I still think they will after this meeting, and after you speak with them or talk with them, because it just seems to be getting worse and worse with them.
Well, I mean, my point, and chief and I have had several conversations over the last several days, as well as several conversations prior to this, but as I told him on Saturday, no, actually, Saturday I said something, today I said, "I'm done, I'm done."
I know, I feel the same way.
We're going to pursue this, and we're going to do anything we can, you know, to make it, we want everybody to coexist, we want the bars to be successful, we want you guys to be successful, we want every downtown business to be successful, we want, we want to grow the downtown, we want to beautify the downtown, we want to, you know, possibly create a Tiff district downtown, trying to revitalize it, so I mean, those are all, everything that we do to make the downtown a better place is in the best interest for you and for the entire village, and, and we are going to do that.
My concern being like with the Peatone Community Foundation, with the kids walking over from the bowling alley on April 24th, and I know I had talked to Chief Mord about it, and he'll have some, a police officer standing by, you know, I don't, on one hand, I'm extremely grateful for that, on one hand, I don't know if that's the, is every time, you know what I mean, I don't want a police officer standing by, I moved from Calumet City to get away from that silver, silver slipper bucket of blood, ball of fire, you'd roll out of one bar into another, and that's what this is, you know what I mean, it's like, I didn't ask for it to be, to be sandwiched between two bars, this was given to me. 16 years ago when I bought that building, this was not the situation, and I feel I'm making the best of it, and the girls are also, but when I get calls about yoga and, you know, people not want, we call it walk the gauntlet, they don't want to walk the gauntlet, you know what I mean, so I do appreciate your time, I don't know if the girls have anything to say.
Where are they, where are they expected to smoke then? If they can't smoke on that whole sidewalk.
We've asked, we have asked throwback and Susie's to try to direct their people out the back door.
In the back, okay.
You know, and, I mean, really my, I think mine and I hope the board agrees with me, and we were going to just have this discussion later tonight, but since we got here before this, my, my concern is more of the front, you know, of the businesses and the public walkways.
Right.
You know, by the back door, I don't get excited about it so much, you know, because people that are going to come in that back door are choosing to come in the back door, they're not trying to get to another business, you know, on the street. So, yes.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
No, go ahead.
I'll only stand up. I have talked to Steve a couple of times, you know, over the last couple of weeks about this, couple of months, I've, we've been dealing with this since before when Steve was the mayor the first time, and they passed a no smoking. You know, I did suggest maybe signs coming from the village and the police, because that means more than a bartender that doesn't see it half the time to run out there and say anything.
Right.
I'm not a smoker, so it bothers me when I have to walk through smoke. We purposely put that smoking caddy in between the windows, because that's about 15 feet. We do encourage people to go in the back. Other people, other towns don't have that, where they can smoke wherever they want, or they have their own big parking lot, so they can go by their cars and smoke.
Right.
We try to push it in the back, because we don't, we don't want that perception either. We want it to be inviting to come in, we want people to come in with their children and eat lunch, or eat dinner.
Which I do, which I do.
And we appreciate your business, right.
But that's what I said, I feel like, I feel like this is how I want things to go. I, I may disagree with Ruben, you know, a lot of the times, but I think we have a good rapport, and I respect him as a business owner, and he respects us, and I appreciate that, and I think we could go forward from there, and without having that communication open as we do, I, I think it fails, as it does with the other bar next to me, it fails, it fails.
No, absolutely. And that's why, you know, I, I always try.
Local business, they come in and eat, and I go get my kids' pictures at their place. I mean, we help each other, you know.
No, our, my, we're going back there. When we had Easter mini-sessions, I mean, all of my people had stuff, they got to go or they ate there, and, and like I said, we were just there ourselves, so, but I do appreciate your time, I just, I'm a little frustrated, and I was just a little concerned being broken into, it's not something I want to publicize, it's not something I wanted to publicize tonight, and I don't want people to be afraid to go there, but when I was broken into, it was extremely scary, and I just feel this situation escalating, you know, this, the spitting on the windows, and I apologize to the girls, there's a lot of things I kept seeking from the girls, that I just didn't want them to pull out, maybe I was afraid they'd pull, you know what I mean, but I just feel there's certain, you know, things going on that I just, I don't feel any business should really have to put up with.
And I agree, I agree.
But I appreciate your time.
No problem. Any other public comment? We will move on to reports of the committees, police chief's report, engineers' report.
The R-50 and Corning Traffic Signal Project, we talked about a couple meetings ago, about some of the options for the painted traffic signals, the LED illuminated street signs, and after I.D.O.'s review, they had no problem with them being as part of the grant.
Okay.
So that's good news.
Good.
However, they didn't, they didn't, they didn't allow the blue color of the street sign, because it's a traffic signal on a state route, they need to be green.
Okay.
But the other bit of good news is, it seems that the emergency vehicle preemption equipment.
That's what I was just going to ask you about.
Will be included in the grant.
Good.
We weren't anticipating that, so that's good news.
Great, good. And then what about the I-57?
The, they're actually finishing it up today, so by next meeting for sure, we can put on the agenda to this, that's it.
Okay.
We were kind of going back and forth, getting the information we needed, so.
So we'll have that on the, you can join the next meeting and discuss it at that time.
Very good.
Anything else?
That's all.
No old business, we'll move on to new business. We have with us tonight Kylie Thatcher, and as part of the Christmas in the Village celebration, one of the raffle prizes, or one of the, was it the silent auction prizes, correct? Was the exciting opportunity to be village president, honorary village president, and Kylie was the winner of that. Her brother Owen actually had lunch with the village president, which was just a thrill of his life, I think, he's still trying to get, trying to get, still trying to get over the excitement of it all, but we actually had lunch a couple of weeks ago at the Country Corner Cafe, and had a, had a nice visit.
Have you reimbursed him yet?
I haven't, I haven't, I keep telling him I'll bring him a check, but I haven't gotten there yet. So I had, I had offered what Kylie set up front here with us tonight, but she kind of wanted to stay back in the audience, so I'm going to go visit with her here for a second, I got a little something to give her.
Your picture.
Yes.
Where's your phone?
Come here. So this is just a certificate, I should have left my glasses on, says, Certificate of Recognition, Village of Peatone, and recognition of being honorary village president, March the 14th, 2016, Kylie Thatcher. So that's yours. This is one of the special blue pens that only people that do something special get, so I'm giving you one of those, too, okay? Can I get a picture?
Look over here, here.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Do you have any questions, Kylie? No? Okay. We did a little tour of the village hall before the meeting tonight, and got to go see all of the secret rooms here, and so it was, it was a very exciting, very exciting time. Thank you, Kylie, thank you very much for being here tonight. All right, next on the agenda, Peatone Chamber of Commerce, community garage sale days, June 17th through the 18th, 2016. The Chamber of Commerce has requested those dates as the community garage sale days, and normally we waive the $5 garage sale fee for that event. Jordy Thatcher, the executive director of the chamber, is here, if any of the trustees have any questions about that. If there are no questions, a motion to approve the garage sale days, community garage sale days for Friday, June 17th, Saturday, June 18th, waiving the $5 fee for garage sales on those dates.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Heck. Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Hamm.
Yes.
Great, item C, discussion of possible changes to the liquor ordinance. We had a meeting with all of the liquor license holders a few weeks ago, and a couple of the things that came out of that discussion would lead to a possible revisement of the ordinance, chief, do you want to?
Sure, I can step here, I've never had a microphone-needed voice. And the camera, I don't think it's going to make me look thinner or bigger. Some of the discussion at the previous meetings was some change of hours on liquor. The first one we're talking about for discussion is the Class D liquor license, the retail sales that goes on as whether or not they be allowed to sell in the gas station environment hard liquor. So I've indicated what we marked off under, right now at the gas stations, they say beer and wine only, we're talking about for discussion purposes, or draft, is what the feeling, we had a liquor discussion, whether or not we just re-allow them, if they just have to buy a different license, whether they could sell hard liquor at the gas stations compared to what they can only do beer and wine now. The other discussion is hours operation. Our gas stations presently can stay open, or the supermarket can stay open as long as the bars, by hours of sales. We, we would recommend, for discussion, a 12 o'clock AM kill of all sales for any package of gas station environment. That's under your control, but for discussion, and allowing the reopening of the bar, or sales of liquor at 6:00 AM for all days of the week, so.
And at our, at our liquor meeting, the one establishment that that would affect right now would be the Circle K, the Shell Station, they're the only one that's open that late.
That late, yeah.
That late, after, after midnight, and they were all for, you know, that midnight cutoff, they, they actually liked that idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't get the crowd that comes in at the witching hour, we can say. And, you know, today's world is about responsible drinking, it's not that the, you know, the bars have responsibility, the servers, the sellers, they all know the rules, that you don't serve the people that are over served. It doesn't, doesn't go good for anybody, and now they, they all have to have the mandated training for everybody, including any bar setting, servers, sellers, all that, so, you know, we don't, we promote the educational training, which is now mandated state. Some of the things we talk about is the 11 o'clock rule on Sundays, where the town comparable to Mantino, they have a certain time on Sunday they allow sales. Other towns around us, Moni, Beecher, do not, Manhattan, do not have a Sunday restriction of 11 o'clock. It used to be noon, it was 11 when the Bears were winning, that has taken place a couple of years, so, so Ruben's snorting because he was opening his place the last time the Bears were winning. So it's just trying to get consistency, and also give some understanding of when the bars can open, when the sales go on, I mean, we have grocery stores and, and people that work different hours, that are adult-like and want to purchase alcohol, but there's always that, why we have to turn away because of the hours.
And that was, and that was one of the conversations we had at that meeting for the Sunday hours, you know, it's kind of an antiquated law, ordinance, whatever, and I mean, it used to be, I remember, you couldn't sell liquor on election day until the polls closed, you know, so, and that's kind of antiquated. That's, that's true.
We'll be back in a couple of days.
So, you know, just out of, out of, that was it, right, chief?
Yeah, just mostly the high points is a different closing time for the gas stations, and whether or not you allow the gas stations to serve hard liquor, or offer to sell hard liquor, not serve it. The other is just a, the 11 o'clock Sunday rule, that everybody can be open for business if they want, and I don't see the bars opening at 6 o'clock on any day of the week, but packaged liquor sales, that's the.
There's a steel mill around.
Steel mill around would be a different story. So that's kind of the short story of the draft, and any changes or recommendations, we would then amend it to have it ready for the next board meeting for discussion.
Trustees?
I remember the bars being, or the gas stations being too heavily supportive of the hard liquor addition.
Well, speaking to a couple of corporate people, I said, you know, corporate knows it's available, we'll be stocking it, because it's all about sales, I mean, it's, everybody's in the selling world, you know, whether people want to half-pint the singles, realistically, I would say this, we know this, we're not a dry country, this isn't the dry counties of the South, because there are some out there, if people want it, they're going to get it. They are, they're going to go to every Walgreens, they're going to stock up, if they're going to drink and drive, nothing we do will stop that, until the after effect, I mean, that's the only thing, I mean, we are not giving up the fight on the drunk driving issue, and the bars shouldn't give up the fight, or do they, on over, people having too much, but I would say an ending, the statement is, if, if the control of alcohol was a concern to the state of Illinois, when they brought back happy hours, I still can't understand that in the, the world. That is a state thing, way beyond our pay grade.
And personally, just personally, as far as the midnight, you know, I'm all for the midnight. For the, getting rid of the Sunday hours, I'm all for that. Personally, I just, I'm not a big, I'm not a big fan of the hard liquor at the gas stations, and I understand, you know, if they want it, they're going to get it, just personally, I don't see, the only benefit to the village to do that would be to sell a little bit of a more expensive liquor license, and at the end of the day, to me, that couple hundred bucks doesn't mean a lot, and, you know, personally, like I said, I'm, I'm not a big, I'm not a big proponent of that, I, personally, I would prefer to see us leave, you know, beer and wine at the gas stations, and move forward with the other issues, but discussion, yes, chief?
Point of order, if I could ask.
You, sir, key.
I, I did it quick, and this isn't for the debate part of this discussion, or discussion part of this debate, is you brought up our liquor fees, and I'll just give you a short, and I'll prepare it later to you, I just did some liquor fees for Mantino, our bars, their bars is $1,125, their retail is $1,500, though I call it retail, the gas, the supermarket, and their beer and wine is $750. Beecher is $1,000 for the bars, $7,500, or $750 for retail, and $300 each for beer or wine to sell in an environment, then, I did happen to look at Moni's, and they're about similar to ours at the level, and Peatone just reminded us, about $700 for a bar, $550 for retail, like the Burkotts, and then $100 for beer and wine, if you serve that in your restaurant setting. So if the board is wishing for us to look at this, we would like to have discussion in the next, maybe by the time we amend this, if it's going to be amended, to look at that for next year.
Right, and, yeah, for next year.
Next year, nothing for this year, it allows us time to have that direction and discussion.
Very good.
Because I've already got licenses coming.
Right, coming, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah, I'd like to get rid of that Sunday rule, I think that's, yeah, it's no good for business, and I don't see the need to sell hard liquor in the gas stations.
If the establishments were fighting for it, like Pat said, they, they really weren't pushing for it, so I would shadow what you said. I agree.
I manage a farm for part of my business, and every spring, we clean the ditch, and 90% of the stuff we find in the ditch are mini bottles of hard alcohol. Maybe the beer cans float away, but that's all you find on there.
We get them for a whole nother.
Yeah, so I would be against it.
So I think to come back at the next meeting, then we'll come back with the.
Well, we shouldn't leave the gas station definition as is for the.
Correct.
Sale of the hard liquor at the gas, you know, are we still looking at the 12 o'clock kill sales?
Yes.
At the gas station?
Yes.
And everything else by the hours.
And then Sunday, Sunday hours go back to.
You're going to be a drive-through truck stop.
Okay, so we'll bring that back at the next meeting.
I'll do that, sir.
Thank you. Item D, discussion on downtown marketing group.
Ed, me, a while ago, I had reached out to South Suburb mayor's managers, the Will County Government League, to maybe recommend different groups that do marketing and business development in downtown areas and in small towns, and they recommended actually somebody I knew already. So I had them come in, Steve and I met with them one morning for breakfast, and I've met with them since. What they do is they help us work on not only marketing materials, but they reach out and touch people that they know that are already developers in the South suburban area and nationally, and show the town off a little bit, and see if they can't make a marriage. They have some interesting prospects, but none of that comes free, so tonight I'm just gauging interest from the board, I'm working on a contract proposal with them, the first one out of the box, I felt, was a little high, so I'm, I'm being me, and I'm whittling it down a little bit, but when I, when I bring it to you, I just want to know if I should continue to do this track, or if, if the board has no interest in that, I know we did the Buxton thing, and that was quite a bit of money, this is nowhere near that kind of money, and I think we'd get better results from it, so, but that's kind of what one of the things we've been working on, and I just wanted to get it in front of you tonight, so I can either continue working with these guys, or move on to something different, so.
What kind of a dollar figure do you think you can reach?
It's going to be a month-to-month thing, and right now, they're, the first numbers out of the box were about four grand a month, tops, depending upon how many hours they spend on it, but I want to cap that at three, and we're working, and I think, I think I'll get that, we just have to work towards that number, so.
Can we get any examples of their track record in communities that?
We're not anywhere near it, yet, yeah, we will, yep, they've already asked for that.
Do they work with towns in the area?
They work with towns all through the South suburbs.
So how do they advocate for us while they're still at, while we're competing against other towns that are in there?
There's particular, they have a particular area, well, they have some downtown things, number one, that they have, Mom and Pop, and they have some contacts with them, you're not, they're not going to bring a national downtown, that's not going to happen, but there's some, there's some interesting area along 57 there that's drawing some interest already, and they're just trying to, they're trying to gauge that interest, and that's why I have this thing on a month-to-month thing, because I don't want to drag out for six months, well, yes, or to kind of, you know, we're talking to them, but we want to see if they can actually deliver something quickly, and we told them times are the essence, too, by the way, that. And we told them times of the essence too, by the way, that we're not gonna, uh, wait a real long time for them to bring us a proposal or even have a conversation with somebody, so. Um, so it's one of those things, it's, it's kind of like the Buxton thing, you take a chance. But I think at the end of the day, I know these guys and I know they've delivered in other places.
But this, but this is completely, this is completely different than the Buxton thing, and I want to make that point.
Could you explain to us what the Buxton thing was?
I'm sorry, the Buxton Group was a national marketing firm.
Right.
And what they do is bring you a list of, hey, these are possible businesses that might want to come to your town. And they give you their contact information and they provide you with some, um, some study material, some numbers, traffic numbers, that type of stuff. And then...
Do you guys work with the Chamber on that, hand in hand?
Towards the end, at this point, no.
You know what I'm saying? What is the Chamber's place in the, in, in...
At the end of it.
And, and we have the executive director of the Chamber here. But my, my understanding, the, the Chamber, the Chamber has always positioned itself not as the people responsible for bringing business to town.
Sure.
They've positioned themselves as the people to do more of the interaction.
Help grow business.
Right, of, of the businesses that are here.
Cause honestly, to, to, to tell you the truth, I mean, even with this referendum coming up, I feel a lot of people maybe are missing the bigger picture. I think the village and the Chamber has a lot to do with that also. Bringing bigger business in, having a bigger tax base, improve our police, our fire, our library, our schools. I think we're missing that whole bigger picture. You can't build schools on the backs of, of homeowners time after time after time after time. And I, I'm grateful for the support the parents have given, but it does, there is a bigger picture out there.
And one of the things that we have been working on for the last several months is to try to develop some relationships with some of the landowners that have been unwilling sellers, you know, and that's been a big part of...
Because of the airport?
Well, no, it's, there, there's a lot of issues. There's, there's a lot of people that own land that really just have not been, as I said, willing sellers or asking a dollar amount, which doesn't make it marketable, you know, to other people. So until we get that portion of things moving forward and also bringing people in to have conversations with them, which is what we're talking about right now, that's the only way we're gonna get things to move forward. The, the Buxton Group thing was more of like, just here's a list of possibilities. Contact these people and see what you can do. This is a little more focused, a little more direct. And, you know, personally, I'd like to see a, a proposal, you know, from them, brought to the board, so we can kind of discuss it in a little bit more detail. But I think, again, what we wanted to get from the board was, do you guys think this is kind of a good thing to pursue?
Certainly worth talking to.
Yeah. How long would your contract be with them?
It's month-to-month. That's, that's what we were just saying. It'll be month-to-month. You're not locked in for a year or anything else. So if we tried it for a few months and we didn't feel that it was working, we would step back.
Greg, will they provide you with a list of the types of businesses available?
Well, I mean, what they're gonna do is they're gonna, they're gonna do a inventory of all our property available, number one. Uh, they're gonna also reach out to the landlords and things like that to find out what the rentals are. And then from there, they're gonna develop their contacts and start talking to their real estate people to find out who is actually looking for a certain property in the area. And then, uh, like some of the vacant land that we have, we put them in contact with the, the owners already there and find out what the, cause you have to buy the land. I mean, that's, you know, uh, in anything, anything major along fifty-seven, there's gonna have to be a land purchase there. And we kind of have to find out what that is. And sometimes if the village goes shopping, uh, the price of poker goes way up. And if it's a, if it's another, if it's a developer or somebody else that's not tied into the village, they can get it at a more reasonable price, so. So they're kind of bird dog, doing their own bird dogging and they will, uh, you know, hopefully put together, we've, we've given them a wish list of things we'd like to see as far as nationals, as, as we talked in the past of a few things. But, um, you know, you, you may need, you may need something larger on fifty-seven to draw, you know, uh, Sonic or, or something like that in front of it. And we're kind of hoping that, we've heard rumor of a, a local, large local chain looking for additional locations. And we floated the idea of Piattone in front of them and we were actually already on their radar of someplace to look for. But now we can kind of nail it down a little bit, see if we can't get something going, so. And that's not a promise. That's, you know, as anything else, these large businesses are all speculative. But we can do the best we can to try to get them in.
Is it strictly retail or is it retail and manufacturing and distribution?
Whatever, whatever we want. Retail, manufacturing, distribu, whatever we have land for or vacant space for. You know, a lot of the manufacturing, they want ready-built, you know. Uh, there's not, not a bunch of them out there building new things, but that doesn't mean there won't be one. So, retail will go for more ground up.
You're saying on fifty-seven, do you mean on the west side of fifty-seven also?
We're looking at different possibilities.
Actually, the west side of fifty-seven, one of the things that we talked about earlier in the meeting with the engineer, we're trying to come up with a number. Uh, we've asked the engineers to come up with a number of what it would take the village to get water and sewer to the other side of fifty-seven. So we have a known number to work with as we move forward. You know, it's, it's always been, yeah, 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 we want to get water and sewer to the other side of fifty-seven. How much is it gonna cost? I don't know. Well, now we're gonna at least get a ballpark number, so we know what we have ahead of us as we move forward.
Were, were you waiting on maybe a business coming in and putting that as part of them coming in?
That's, you know, there's a, a number, there's a number of different ways that could go. If you, if you had a business coming in the other side, then you get them to participate in that. Or else, you know, if the village does it, then you get it on the recapture on, on the other side. It's, it's just, you know, it's a down-the-road thing, but until we start looking at those numbers and gathering those numbers, it's just complete speculation. We, we need to develop a plan. And that's what we're doing right now.
Good to hear.
So I think what we're gonna do then is we'll go forward, we'll get a, a proposal from them, and we'll bring it back to the board for further discussion.
Actually, if the board wishes, I'll have them come in and, and make their own proposal.
No, I think that would be good. If they're ready on the next meeting, we can do that. Item E, discussion on cafe gambling.
Well, I guess that's me again, but not that I propose it. I just, uh, we've had some requests, uh, for different types of cafe gambling. Uh, one company sent a letter request, so I went and, uh, took a little road trip and looked at their current situation. Um, I'm gonna try not to interject my own personal opinion in this, but it's not, I don't, they want to be downtown, and I don't know that we want that here. So, but that's just my opinion.
And right now, there is nothing in our liquor ordinance that would fit that type of establishment. It would be something that we would, am I right, Chief?
You're correct, sir.
We would be, it would be something that we would have to create as part of our liquor ordinance. Um...
And so, a cafe gambling, you don't serve food, you're just liquor and gambling?
It's more of a sandwich and the machines, the poker machines.
Poker machines and vending machine sandwiches and liquor.
Are you suggesting like Tony's has it?
No, well, that's...
But they have a liquor license.
They have a liquor license.
And they have a full restaurant.
Right.
These places are now like a...
So this is, there, there's a number of these places sprouting up in other communities where it is, to, to get the machines, you have to have a liquor license. So, the, this establishment is created, they're given a liquor license, like as, uh, the administrator said, they may have a machine for sandwiches or they may have some kind of sandwich-type thing. But it's primarily come in, play the machines, and you can have a beer, you know.
I'm totally against it.
Yeah, I agree.
We're four thousand people. Right now, we got twelve places where you can buy alcohol. We got seven places where you can sit at the bar and gamble, or not sit at the bar, you know, go in the bar and gamble. There's only one winner in this, and that's the person that would get the cafe gambling. It would cannibalize existing bar owners' businesses, which, why do we want to do that to our existing businesses? Um, and how many more places do we need to drink and gamble? I mean, I, I, I don't like being assoc, I mean, I have nothing against gambling, I have nothing against drinking. But, I mean, how much saturation do we need?
And I don't want to throw gas on the fire, but the one I went to was closed at lunchtime. No hours on the door. So I don't know when it's open.
How many liquor license, do, do you have an amount of liquor license that you give out, or does it stay with the address?
Okay. I, I'll answer your question, but as we go through a meeting, like if you have a question, and then we'll try to address it as we go on. The liquor licenses are by ordinance, so we never have it over a liquor license. So if we want to create another liquor license, if somebody would come in a restaurant or somebody would want to come in and serve liquor, then it would be up to the board to create their liquor license by ordinance.
Yeah, I'm not for this idea at all either. I think we've got enough places to gamble and drink too, so.
I'm ditto.
Okay. Again, same here?
Yeah, I agree.
For every dollar inserted in the machine, what portion goes to the village as a tax?
It's a small percentage.
Five percent of the net of what they make on the machine.
Five percent of the net?
Five percent of what the machine makes.
I just think that even if this was something we would consider, downtown is not the area for it. I, I know when this originally came up, I think it was before you guys, um, I said if, if we were gonna allow this, I personally think it should be out on Route fifty somewhere, in that strip mall or, or somewhere else. I don't, I'm kind of like Mike said, you know, downtown has enough. I don't think that's the place for it, if we're gonna think about it.
Again, we just wanted to get everybody, put it out there for discussion. Okay, so I think we have a consensus of the board there.
Just so you know, we answered those questions. If there is no license available at this time, the board would have to create one.
Yes.
That doesn't mean that you're likely to do that. There's no promises there, so.
Also, that you didn't really fit into the category either.
Well, and that was, there's no, none of that lis, that license type available at all. So we'd have to create not only a law, but a license. And I did explain to them that I didn't think that was likely, but we'd ask them, so.
Uh, item F, community cleanup day, April the thirtieth, twenty sixteen, eight a.m. to noon. Uh, we had a community development committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and one of the things that we discussed at that committee was, uh, having a community cleanup day. So we were looking at April the thirtieth. Um, Greg's contacted the garbage company.
We were able to get a roll-off dumpster. So now we're just hoping they can find us some bags. And I reached out to a couple of our vendors to see if they would supply bags for us. And, uh, see, and also volunteers, cause, uh, some of the companies, uh, do, um, community service days with some of their employees. And I was hoping that maybe we'd get some volunteers to help us too. But we do have a roll-off for sure, and hopefully we have bags. And then that'll make it available to our people that want to go out and do the cleanup, they'll have a place to throw it. And we'll have, uh, public works trucks driving around picking up the bags and then putting them in the dumpster, and they'll come and get it the following Monday or Tuesday, so.
But we'll reach out to the, the Boy Scouts, yeah, the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, any, any other community organization that wants to participate, you know, we'll, we'll put it out there.
Any citizens too.
Any citizens, absolutely, anybody, yeah, anybody.
And just to clarify, this is gonna be pretty much public ways, streets, alleys?
Correct. Not walking into somebody's yard, just parkways, streets.
Like, can we walk? So like where I live, like behind Casey's and the, I mean, it's filled with garbage from people. Like, can we clean that up and then put it out? Okay. That's a good idea.
So just another day trying to get, you know, the community involved and do something to beautify the community.
And this doesn't include sticks and branches and twigs?
Just garbage.
Just garbage.
Diverge into...
Litter, garbage debris.
Yeah, we won't be able to throw sticks in that dumpster, so.
Speaking of sticks, um, branch pickup will resume on April the fourth. Uh, April the fourth, that's Monday?
Yes.
Uh, so April the fourth is north of Corning Avenue. The following week, April eleventh is south of Corning Avenue. April the eighteenth, we go back north. April twenty-fifth, we go back south. And it goes that way back and forth, um, every other week. If there's a fifth Monday in the month, there is no pickup. It's only on the first through the fourth. Starting again on April the fourth. Vehicle stickers, vehicle stickers are due March the thirty-first. So we have two weeks left, uh, for vehicle stickers. So if you have not purchased your vehicle stickers, please do so as soon as possible. So that is done.
Uh, Jim, did, last meeting, you talked about, uh, sending a letter to the guy with the liens on his property. Did, did that get done?
Yes.
Yeah.
I haven't received a response.
You haven't, no response?
Not yet. But I will, I will follow up. I actually was thinking of that as I was driving over here. No response. I should have followed up. But I, I will now.
Great. Hey, Greg, uh, the gentleman that came to talk to us about investing, what's the status of that?
Just waiting to hear the interest from you guys, if there's any more. And he can, uh, he can come back and give you more, a deeper detail.
Okay.
What did we kind of decide?
Yeah, I thought he was gonna, I thought we said we were interested and he was gonna bring us a proposal of what we could earn.
Okay.
Still have, and still have fluidity in the, in the cash available.
Okay. I'll follow up.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else from the trustees?
I actually want to congratulate Paul Keen. I don't know if, uh, many people know Paul, but Paul is a wrestler for Piattone Junior High, and he has won his fourth consecutive state championship. Only person to do so, so.
Fifth, sixth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth?
Yeah, pretty cool that he's from Piattone.
That's very cool.
Yeah.
Wrestling?
Wrestling.
Mm-hmm.
And the fact that he's the only person to ever do that is very cool.
Put us on the...
What's that?
Put us back on the map.
Put us back on the map.
Can we get a, can we get a sign that says when you come into Piattone?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there is, we've had that discussion about those signs, and what was, what was the answer on that sign?
Neighbor, sorry.
I don't know what the last answer was, but I know if they do, if they do go, it's just temporary.
Yeah, they're, they become temporary signs. But typically, the, the person's family or somebody does that. But they go through the village, you know, they have that done. Anything, any questions in the press?
I have one more thing.
Okay, sorry.
Um, the Myers-Pland retention pond, we talked about that last time, and we decided that the association was responsible for that. What happens? I mean, if they do nothing, we do nothing, it just continues to become more of an ice war. What, what's the procedure that we follow that makes sure it gets done?
There's no popular procedure. I mean, you have to send a letter to all the residents there saying that they're responsible for it. That's gonna create a problem. I mean, no doubt about it, but they are. It's their association. And I think the attorney will bear this out. We do have the right to lean all the properties if we go in and clean it up. And we certainly don't want to do that, so.
I don't think you do. I, I would think, I don't know if that homeowners' association is operative.
I don't think it is.
And, and, you know, that's obviously where you would start normally. Right, but if, if they're just essentially defunct, then yes, now you're, now you're to all the property owners.
Do they, are those homeowners even aware of the fact that there was, is, isn't, an association, what the responsibilities are? Should we send them a letter informing them, you're part of this association, we understand it's defunct, you need to get organized and present the village with a plan to solve this problem?
Probably not a bad idea. That's a good idea. Uh, that would be potentially, uh, effective. And I know we had a person, it's been a number of months.
Right, we had somebody from...
From, who was saying they were from the homeowners' association. But, you know, and some contact there could be made. Perhaps we could contact to see if it is running at all. But if it is not, or it's essentially inoperative, let's put, might be there on paper, but they may not be having their meetings, uh, electing their officers and that. My guess is, they may not be. But sending them a letter, informing them of their responsibility, do that. Otherwise, each, you know, each parcel, each lot is, uh, responsible. Not a bad idea at all.
Cause the next thing we've got coming up is the Memorial Day celebration. And people go out there and they see this and it looks bad, then it's a reflection on us. It's like the village isn't doing anything, and at least we've got something in motion. Make them aware of the responsibility. And then if they say no, we're not gonna do it.
About how many homeowners?
Twenty.
I was gonna say twenty to twenty-five. That's not too bad.
The hill's coming down, that they were initially complaining about, so. Somebody bought the property, so they're... Somebody bought the property, so they're moving the dirt.
I think that might've changed.
Oh, no kidding? In your head?
I think that might've changed. Um, so I think we should go out and, if we can draft a letter to that effect.
And we also wanna hit the vacant lots with whoever's owning them. Uh, whoever, I don't think this is gonna be a pro rata.
Okay. Questions in the press? All right, at this time, I would ask for a motion to go into closed session, uh, to discuss the appointment employment. Compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony and complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. There will be no action coming out of closed session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Hacks, signed up by Trustee Jones.
Mr. Hacks?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Go into closed session. Thank you.